Um. Bojoo and then I'm Maganuk, Indiguski Quay, Indigenous Akas, Peyton Ntiko, Nakua, Juingin Dunjaba, Sabikane, Kizike, Nindaw. Um. Hello, everybody. My name is Peyton Counts. My spirit name is Indiguski Quay, Sookreswoman. I'm originally from Turtle Mountain, but I live and work on the Voiceport Indian Reservation as the Cultural Healing Coordinator here. And so a lot of what my position revolves around is just sharing traditional knowledge and ceremony, plant knowledge, anything that kind of feels good for the community to connect to their cultural identity. And so for me, it's really important to get community feedback. So if people have suggestions or want different ceremonies, different information, then my inbox is always open. You can email me. My email is pcounts@voiceport-nsn.gov. I can write that in the chat. Or you can follow the Voiceport Cultural Healing Facebook page, which I update all the time and add all of our different events and things that are happening too. And then we also have a YouTube page, which this recording will go on after the event's over. So if you guys feel like you have somebody who needs this knowledge, wants this knowledge, then feel free to share that link after. And if you guys have any questions throughout this particular event, you guys can put those in the chat or send them to me. Rayanne will be kind of focused on her presentation that she'll be sharing. And so I know sometimes like people like to write immediately to the host. So if you don't want people to know who's asking the question, you could just field those questions to me and I'll ask Rayanne as she's going through her um talk and feel free to ask questions as they come up, kind of flow in a natural progression. If it feels like we want to continue on one topic, we can go that way. Um, but I wanted to start us off with a nice song. So I invited Mizaway to help us out with that. So I can hand it over to Mizaway.
Awesome. Ah, Ani, Mizaway McGeezy, Indigenous Akas, Makua Denu Dame, Muswe giving way, Saaguning, Ndunjaba. My name is Mizaway McGeezy, Everywhere Eagles. I am Bear Clan and I'm a member of the Red Lake Ojibwe. And I was invited to come and sing for everyone today for this online event you guys have happening today. Um, I think it's about Birch or Birthworks? What is it? Yeah, okay. So um, yeah, so I just wanted to sing a song. This song was taught to me by one of my drum teachers from when I was in high school named Louis Foot. He's from Standing Rock. And um, he used to come and sing with us back in high school, like every day after high school, we went to four directions in North Minneapolis and would catch the bus to uh the Indian Center, South Minneapolis. And Louis Foot would be there to teach us songs and things like that. And this is one of the first songs he taught us. We were kids and I was thinking about him a lot these last couple of days. So it'd be nice to kind of sing one of the songs he showed me and do share with everybody today. So. Me, which, and I'll turn it back to Peyton.
Oh, me goch, Mizaway. Thank you for sharing your voice with us and sharing your songs. And. So thank you. And now I will hand it over to Rayanne Madison. She's a Voiceport Band member. She's over in Michigan. So she's an hour ahead of us. I don't know how the word is, but I'm excited. So I'm a student here as well. So like I mentioned, for people who are kind of joining, if you guys have questions throughout the event, please feel free to write those in the chat, send those to me. If you don't want people to know you're the one asking for some reason, you know, sometimes it can be a little intimidating. But I will ask those as we kind of go through the presentation. So feel free to ask if they pop up. And this will be recorded and shared after the event. Go ahead, take it away, Rayanne.
All right, me goch. I appreciate it. And thank you, Amiza Way, for the song. Felt so good to start off in that way and feel kind of nervous tonight. I don't know why. I get nervous literally before every single presentation I ever do. And I've done probably thousands at this point. So I just feel really happy. It's a lot of other Inishnabe with me tonight and I can be relaxed and be a little bit more myself and just extend a lot of gratitude to each of you for joining me here. And and for sure, if there's anything that you'd like to share in our discussion tonight, please do so. I think that everyone here probably has a lot of really valuable experience and insight and knowledge. And perhaps there are some knowledge keepers in the group who would be able to contribute their stories as well. So please, at any point, we don't have to go through the entire presentation. I really want to just take it in whatever direction is best for this particular group. So with that being said, I want to start with an ancestor and land acknowledgement. And I was laughing with Peyton at the beginning before everyone got on because she was like, do you think we could try to keep it to an hour and a half? And I was like, I'm going to really try. My intro alone can take like 20 minutes, but knowing that most of us here are also in the Great Lakes region, perhaps we can go a little bit more quickly through the introduction. I teach with people all over Turtle Island, US, Canada, and all around the world. And so I like to orient people to where I'm at, the land that I'm on, the people that I'm from, that I'm part of, the place that I get to call home. And sometimes people don't know what that looks like. They they can't even fathom what it's like to live here in the Great Lakes region. So I just like to start with an acknowledgement of my ancestors, just to give thanks and gratitude. And I say this all the time, but it's very, very true. I wake up every day. I'm literally so thankful to be Ojibwe, so thankful that I get to be in my own ancestral territorial homelands. Although I am a Voiceport member, I have grown up in Inishnabeaki here in Michigan. And you're probably familiar that there's a lot of Native American tribes in Michigan and just feel so thankful that I get to do the work that I do here on these lands and the work in reclaiming and remembering birthwork traditions and serving my community and what's a really important role and a really important act of service for me. And I always like to remind everyone, especially those who are not Inishnabe, that Inishnabe people are ongoing. We're modern. We're alive. Our cultures are forever. We are not some, you know, just Indians that are situated in some mythical historical past. And I think that sometimes surprises people to remind them that there's native people all around you and that we look very diverse. Our families look very diverse, but there's a lot of beauty in our communities. And this is a picture that I really love from the Kiwanob Bay Indian Community, which is a community that I have strong family ties to. My husband is a member there. Our children are enrolled there as well. And so it's just one of the places that I get to call my home base. And this is a cradle board workshop that we did in, I believe, summer of 2019. And I've been really blessed to be a part of a team of folks who have done several cradle board workshops all across Michigan. And our teacher, and he's the one in the middle, Dr. Casey Church, Inishnabe Nune from the Pokugan Band of Potawatomi is the one who makes the boards. And with his guidance and leadership, we've been able to put over 200 cradle boards back into Michigan communities. And so I think this is such a great documentation of how our cultures are ongoing, how our cultures are constantly moving and that Inishnabe people are modern people, that we're still here and that we're still thriving and coming back to ourselves in ways that is determined by our own sovereignty and autonomy with a strong emphasis in our relationships and our kinship values. And I'm down there in the front and you can see my little guy who's now four years old, who's just a baby in his little teak noggin. And it's been such an amazing thing to see families actually using the cradle board in their traditional parenting practices. Sometimes you see cradle boards in museums or in old photographs. I've talked to so many people who said they they remember seeing cradle boards or that their family had one, but it was kind of stored away. No one really used it anymore. No one really knew how to use them or what they were for, or they're just kind of seen as decorative items. And so to be a part of this movement to coming back to the traditional uses of our ancestral technologies has really been a highlight of my career. And I wanted to give that acknowledgement. And I'm Ojibwe and I'm always laughing because I'm like, you know, when you're like, you think your tribe's the best? And I'm like, yeah, our Ojibwe's are like so awesome. And so I should probably, sometimes I think I should probably expand my map to like the other, you know, tribal nations in the Great Lakes region, because for sure, it's not all Ojibwe's here. But I'm Ojibwe. And so I always like to show people the extent of our territories. And of course, there are, you know, Oneidas and Lakota and Dakota people and but there's Potawatomi's and Odawas and lots of other people represented in this area. But the extent of the Ojibwe territory specifically is here. And the dot that you see, the red dot in Sioux St. Marie, Michigan, that's where I live. And I have lived for almost nine years, will be nine years this January. And um, have uh, have the privilege of being able to do my work and follow my calling in this particular place. As you can see, we're surrounded by water. We're right in this really amazing waterway. Lake Superior on one side, Lake Huron on the other. And I put the map in here because sometimes, you know, we're all probably a lot of us are not very good at geography, having been through the US public school system. No one can remember the Great Lakes. And I'm like, open up the map and find the Great Lakes, because I think it's hard for people to fathom or to even remember the last time they looked at a map. And look at how huge these waterways are and just think about the positionality of them, where they are situated. It's, you know, it's a waterway that has been historically so important to the Inishnabe people of these regions for time immemorial, ever since our great migration to this area for a lot of reasons, including the foods that are here on this land that are so central to our identities, the waterways being a passageway that we could travel and traverse very expertly. It is said that our ancestors would be able to trip, to travel from where I'm at in Sioux St. Marie all the way down to Detroit, Michigan via the waterways in just one day. And so it shows you how good we are at working with the land and how central land-based living is to us as indigenous people. And it's also cool because we're in this meeting place between Lake Superior and Lake Huron, which is also very historically important, because this is a place where throughout all of Inishnabe history, a lot of leaders would come to this area to make peace or to sign treaties or to convene on behalf of the community. And so I find it very important that I'm here doing the work that I get to do and being with community, being with Inishnabe from all over the Great Lakes region. And it's all from my little tiny house in the middle of Sioux St. Marie, Michigan. So the Sioux is home to the Sioux St. Marie Tribe of Chippewa Indians. And about eight miles west of us, there is another Inishnabe community called the Bay Mills Indian Community. And so I give acknowledgement to those communities for accepting me as a guest here on these lands and just hope that I do right by them in the work that I do and the way that I conduct myself. And a map of the tribal communities in Michigan are 12 federally recognized Indian tribes in the state of Michigan that are all Inishnabe. So some Ojibwe, some Odawa, and some Potawatomi people. And then we have several urban centers as well, including the cities of Detroit, Lansing, Kalamazoo, Grand Rapids, and others where there are many dozens more tribal nations represented, people who came to Detroit and other big cities to be a part of urban relocation programs as well as a very strong history of Black liberation in these lands, being that there are many stops in the Underground Railroad in Detroit and in the surrounding area. And so allow me just to very briefly formally introduce myself. Ah, Ni Buju, Ni Bishikue Indigenous Akas, Minwa Ran Indigenous Akas, Inishnabe Quay Nindaw, Ajijakindotem, Pontiac, Michigan, Ndunjaba, Bowading Nindaw. And shared my English name, which is Rayanne, as well as my Ojibwe name, which is Ni Bishikue, or translate to Water Woman. And let you know that I am Inishnabe Quay from the Crane Clan. And my spirit first founded, or I was born in Pontiac, Michigan, which is about an hour north of Detroit, Michigan. And that I currently live in the historical and contemporary lands of the Sioux St. Marie Tribe of Chippewa Indians, which is in Sioux St. Marie, Michigan, which is Bowading. And that's also a really important place because it's, you know, Bowading means the place of the rapids. And there used to be between Lake Superior and Lake Huron a huge, great, really big rapids that you could hear from miles away. And so that's where that name Bowading comes from. Unfortunately, it was destroyed in order to make a way for the construction of the Sioux locks, which is where ships that are traversing the Great Lakes can be either lowered into Lake Huron coming from Lake Superior or raised up into Lake Superior if they're coming from Lake Huron. And the reason is because there's like a 20-foot difference in the like, the depth of the water between them. And so it would just be this big drop and they took out the falls so that they could put the Sioux locks in there. And there've been a lot of sort of diminishment of the traditional lands and waterways in this place. And so I definitely sit with the nuance of what it means to be in a place that's so historically significant and the grief that can come with that as well. And so my stories and perspective just like to be really transparent about who I am and what I'm doing and where I'm from and situate you so that you can understand a little bit of the lens from which I work and operate. And so I am a member of Voiceport Band of Chippewa Indians. My dad was the Voiceport member. And my mom was 100% European. Our family on that side, the Dutch family came to the United States in the year 1920. So there's a lot of Dutch people in the downstate area of Michigan. And I don't know how, when, or where this happened, but they got married and had little old me. And I've lived forever and ever in Ojibwe homelands in Michigan and feel really blessed to have grown up here in a land-based education. My family were very rural and very sheltered existence. As a child, I grew up eating all of the traditional foods. I feel really blessed. My mom was actually the hunter in our family. And so there was always like a deer out in the garage. And I was filleting fish, probably when I was five years old, six years old. Filleting fish was like my job because I was the oldest one. And my education and orientation into this work really began when I was a kid, just living out on the land and looking at all the flowers and watching all the, you know, cranes fly over me and all the other birds. I used to really like to watch them and just eating all the really fantastic and abundant foods that grow here in the Great Lakes region. And so we do have four seasons here and we're really known for a long and pretty severe winter where we are. We have probably four to five, in some places, six months of winter. And so we're known for it being pretty cold, really snowy, very windy. And in fact, you might even hear some of that wind happening right now because we're in the middle of the start of a snowstorm that's supposed to last throughout the whole night tonight. And so that really informs a lot of the work that I do. I am a mother and a wife. And you'll see pictures of my kids throughout the presentation. My baby, baby, the one behind me in the picture is almost 15. And it was really her birth and my postpartum healing and my experience in breastfeeding her and raising her that initiated so much of the work that I've been called to do. And so much of the knowledge that I received really started with that experience of birthing her. And so just give acknowledgement to my three kids. I also have a four-year-old boy. And then my littlest baby was just born on Christmas morning. So she'll be one years old in just a couple of weeks. I do carry a lot of privileges. And so I just wanted to give that acknowledgement that we all don't have the same experience in the world and we don't have all the same ways of viewing things and the same lens that we operate from. So I do want to acknowledgement, I do want to acknowledge that I do carry class or economic privilege, have an OJAS. I grew up poor AF in the middle of nowhere, Michigan. But I was very thankful and to be able to go to college and work in my field and live in a two-income household. I do have formal academic and educational training. And I do also carry thin cisgender, non-disabled privilege, with the exception of my glasses that I've had since I was four years old. It don't really pose any issues to me moving through my daily life. And I am a sovereign full-spectrum birth worker, 14, almost 15 years. So what that means is that for a variety of different reasons, I have taken many, many trainings and learned from a lot of people and have a lot of experience. However, I choose consciously and very intentionally not to be certified through any particular program. And so there's not a whole lot of letters behind my name. But there's the reasoning for that. It's because I want to be able to do the work that I do oriented towards my people in my community, rather than a particular authority who can tell me what I can and can't do. As indigenous people, that's really difficult for us. So for myself, I just choose to be sovereign in that way. And of course, indigenous people are not monolithic. Ojibwe people are not monolithic. There's so much diversity in our communities. There's different teachings and protocols between families, between individuals, between communities, between dialects of our language and the different land bases that we take up as indigenous people. And so my little slice of knowledge and storytelling that I share is just that. It's just such a small part of an overall history and overall picture from our community. And I, I just wanted to share that my perspective may not adequately represent southern indigenous people, Black Afro indigenous people, urban Indians, de-tribalized people, folks who have gone through force removal and diaspora, two-spirit relatives, disabled and neurodivergent people, as well as there's 550 or more tribes in North America. And that's not even extending to indigenous communities down in Central and South America. So, so much diversity. Take what I say with a grain of salt. Keep asking questions after you hear the things that I share. Go back into your own community and your own knowledge keepers and your own knowledge and using your own prayer and your own tobacco as well, because the, you know, the answers for how we can all get right, how we can all get healed and how we can all get free depends on each of us doing our part. And so what I'm sharing with you today is just a little, little tiny piece of that and hope that you'll be accepting of that. So that being said, we get into the presentation, which is called Remembering Wajashk. And I call it this in honor of our honorable ancestor and relative Wajashk, whom you all may know as the Muskrat. The Muskrat is such an important part of our foundational creation teachings or origin stories, myths and legends in Ojibwe culture, but also has an ongoing and enduring relationship to Inishnabeaki or the lands that we are stewed to here in the Great Lakes region. It's a little bit smaller than a beaver, although they do kind of look alike. They have the teeth they can gnaw through, you know, like branches and leaves and those types of things. They do also live in the water. And they, and the beavers are the only aquatic dwelling animals here that build their lodges right in the water, who are mammals. And they're a little bit smaller and you can see they don't have the big tail like the beaver does. That's kind of how you can tell them apart. And they're so damn cute too, like in addition to just being so important to us as the Inishnabe. I'm just like, I'm literally that person that screams when they see animals out the car. So like, I'll be like, pull over. We gotta put out tobacco for Wajashk. Every time I see one, I have a little tobacco in my car and we're super extra like them. My husband and I, once we're driving around. So they're really goddamn cute and I just have so much respect for them. But I promise there's a reason why I call this presentation Remembering Wajashk. And some of you might already be guessing because we're just getting into our wintertime storytelling season here in Inishnabeaki. And I for sure am not a great storyteller. I'm not fluent in the language. I'm not really animated with my sound effects. I would love to someday have the ability to do that. But what I want to share is just a tiny little snippet of a story that some of you are probably familiar with. And as you know, the whole story would take, really, it would take the whole winter from start to finish because we're talking so much about where we come from as Inishnabe. And there's many, many layers to that. But the little snippet that I want to share comes from Wajashk. And some of you are probably already thinking ahead, what's coming here? And so we have this story and it's so, so foundational to us. And I never get tired of hearing it and I hope you don't either. So we have this story that our, our relative Nanabuju, and some of you may know him by other names, Wanabuju. There's other names that he goes by. And in our way, we see him as being a half man and half monadu or half spirit. And we know him to be a trickster. And some people would call him uncle, or some people would call him cousin, or some people would call him relative. But we know Nanabuju has many functions within Ojibwe society. And we know there's many, many myths and legends centered on him, including him going through the Great Lakes and naming all of the plants and animals and all of the fantastic stories that are carried within those travels as well. But we know that there's a point in time when the entire Great Lakes have flooded over. And the, the, the world was just water. You could look out and it was just water everywhere. And we know that it was very, very deep. We know the depth of the Great Lakes is very, very great. And so Nanabuju, our cousin, is floating on this log. And there's a few animals who have survived this immense flooding, but there's no more Inishnabe. And everywhere is just water when Nanabuju looks out. And he says to himself, man, it was really regrettable that I didn't grab any earth from the bottom to bring up so that I could rebuild Inishnabeaki on the back of his log. And the animals around, he starts to think, hmm, there's some really good swimmers who have survived this flooding. And perhaps we could work together to bring Who have survived this flooding and perhaps we could work together to bring some earth back up to rebuild Anishnabe Aki. And so he starts with, as you know, he starts with the loon. And he asked the loon, he says, loon, my relative, would you be able to swim down into the bottom? And grab some earth and bring it back up so that we can rebuild Anishnabe Aki. And as you know, loon swims down to the bottom and he's not able to make it all the way to the bottom because the water is just too much, just too deep. And loon swims all the way back up to the top and says, I wasn't able to make it, my friend. I couldn't even see the tops of the trees. This is how deep the water was. And so Nanabuju asks if there's anyone else who could take on this responsibility. And next he asked the diver, the diving duck, Shingabis. He says, Shingabis, you are so adept at swimming. You're a really strong swimmer. Are you able to make it to the bottom so that you can grab some water and, or some earth and bring it back up so that we can rebuild Anishnabe Aki? And the diving duck being such a strong swimmer, so confident that they could get to the bottom and bring up that little piece of earth. But they are swimming, swimming down, down, down and they make it only halfway to the trees before they have to swim back up to the top. Uh, they lost the strength. And they say, I'm sorry, I couldn't make it all the way down. I only got to halfway to where I could see the tops of the trees. So it tells you just how deep and how much water is here. And as we know, there are several other relatives that Nanabuju calls on. Uh, to try to make it down to the bottom, including Beaver, who is a really strong swimmer, perfectly built to traverse the Great Lakes. Uh, and the wetlands environment, big, strong tail, uh, hold their breath for a very long time. They have that fur that just glides through. And Beaver is only able to swim down as deep as the top of the trees before they lose their strength and float back up to the top. Nanabuju says the last chance that we have is to our humble little relative Wajashk, the muskrat. Muskrat being the smallest and the most humble of all of the water-dwelling animals. Perhaps not the one that we would automatically think of when we think of someone who's really strong, really great swimmer in deep, deep depths of water. And uh, Wajashk accepted the, uh, the call. Dive all the way down to the bottom and he was able to bring up a piece of the earth. And as we know, our relative Wajashk perished during this journey and uh, Nanabuju opened. His paws when he gets back to the top of the water and much to his surprise, actually finds that there's a piece of earth in each paw. And in some stories you hear that there is also something in the mouth. Um, there's many different ways of sharing this, but I just picture that body, you know, floating to the top and then Boozy opening up to find. That um, our relative Wajashk had been successful out of all the animals that he was the one that was able to bring up that earth. In his little fist like this. And as you know, Nanabuju was able to take that piece of earth from both of Wajashk's paws. Uh, blow into the earth and rebuild Anishnabe Aki on the back of a turtle. And that place that we believe is the home of the Anishnabe or the heart of Anishnabe Aki. Is uh, actually right here in Michigan and it's called Mackinac Island, a really sacred and very, very special place to go. One of my favorite places in the whole world to be. And so our, our friend Wajashk, our, our relative, so small, so humble. Uh, but so important and in fact, somebody who is um. Responsible for our existence, you know, somebody who is able to save all of us so that Nanabuju could. Uh, rebuild Anishnabe Aki in the back of that turtle and all the other animals who played such an important part in that experience as well. And I share that because I. Love to go back to our own stories and our own knowledge and our own wisdom and expertise. As an Anishnabe people. And I learned this from a relative named Fred McGregor, who's uh, Anishnabe Nene. Who said this, that when babies hold their hands in a fist, they are remembering Wajashk. When a baby is holding their hand like this, they're remembering the muskrat. And. When you go through formal training around postpartum care, in particular around lactation. You may learn in this broader sort of context of the, of. Mainstream English-speaking Western education around breastfeeding and lactation support. You may hear things like. Um, feeding cues or what to look for to know that a baby is satisfied and not hungry anymore when they're feeding out the breast. And you may even see visuals uh, shared that you'll know a baby is full. When they release their fist and their hand is nice and relaxed. And if a baby is holding their fist, it could be a hunger cue and it could mean that they're still hungry, they're not satisfied. And I had, I really, and I question everything. So and I, if you told me the sky is blue, I would literally go outside and be like, let's talk about this. Because I really value other ways of knowing and thinking about things. But when I see something like that, that's so universally specific, when a baby holds their hand like this, it's because they're hungry and they're not satisfied. And when a baby releases their hand, that means they've had enough milk. And I'm going, hmm, but I have this story in my culture that babies hold their hands like this because they're remembering Wajashk. They're remembering the muskrat. And I started to ask people, have you ever noticed your baby holding a fist? And tell me about what you've noticed when they're holding it. Have you ever seen a baby holding their fist while they're super milk drunk? Really full, obviously very satiated from the abundant breast milk you've given them. Do you still notice them holding a fist like this? And I started to ask that to different people and a lot of Anishnabe people. And all of them said yes. All of them said yes. And I was thinking of my own babies and looking down and I'm like. I am looking at a baby that's very, very full and very asleep and very, very satisfied. And she got her little fist like this. So to me, I just value so much our own expertise. And I don't want us to forget that when we move through these systems and these institutions and these different ways of knowing and learning. That our ancestors have and have always had very immense wisdom. And that everything, uh, all of the stuff that science finally like learns and catches up to. About how to be a human is so deeply contained and so safely contained within our own stories. And our own wisdom as Anishnabe people. And so for me, this is like the foundation of how I teach and share. I always try to orient us back to ourselves, back to our land, back to our creation stories, back to our language, back to our kinship systems. Because that is what has preserved us throughout all of time, despite all of the many hardships and obstacles placed in front of us. Via the colonization displacement of our land, the destruction of our land and culture. And so I, I start with that because I just want to remember that little humble relative. And I just want us to always remember that we can go back to our own stories and our own language, that there's a lot of truth in that. And there are many other ways of thinking and ways of knowing. If I was to assess somebody to ask if perhaps they weren't getting enough milk. There would be a lot of things that I would look for. I'd not even necessarily think to go to, are they holding a fist or are they not? Because to me, I know that's only one little piece of the puzzle, right? Um, and I want people to, to, to know that a, a fist like this is usually harmless. And in fact, it's very meaningful. And so I thank you for sharing that. And I hopefully I didn't butcher that story too badly. I'm sure you all have some like aunties and uncles and uh, you know, people who can tell that story. And it would take like many, many hours just shared a little bitty snippet about and kind of summarized so that we could get to the good part with our, our friend. Uh, the muskrat, but I, I hope it makes sense why I include that and why he's so important to the work that I do. And we have a lot of beliefs around this time, uh, from preconception before pregnancy is conceived. Through pregnancy to labor and birth to our postpartum healing and the newborn period. That are all very, um, very richly informed by our language. By our traditional practices around kinship and caring for each other and around the ways that we are to conduct ourself in this space. And we have beliefs in Anishnabe culture about babies and parents and birthing people. And why start here? Because if you are interested in serving in any capacity. People in this time of life, it's really important to understand the sacredness and the why. Why do we do this? And there's so many answers within our own cultural teachings about why is birthwork so important? And how should we do this if we are to call ourselves birthworkers? We believe that newborns are born fully conscious and fully sentient. Meaning that our babies, uh. Are, are born having um, the ability to see. And hear and taste and think about the world around them. They are born with at least seventy-plus documented newborn reflexes. So little superpowers is what I call the baby superpowers, things that allow them to attach themselves to the breast. Things that allow them to keep themselves safe within the safe and secure environment of the person who gave life to them. And our stories about how we chose to come to this place and how we chose to be born. Are very rich and they start all the way back into the spirit world or the sky world or creator's world. What we call the land of everlasting happiness. And we know that it was very much a conscious choice for every Anishnabe person. To look down on earth and see the parents that they would be born by and consent to coming down in this journey. And in fact, we also have a belief that we've looked ahead at every moment. Every little detail of our entire life from birth to death. And even knowing how many challenges and obstacles we would face in this realm. Um, still chose to come here because we have some sacred fulfillment that we've, that we've agreed to. You know, some kind of agreement between ourselves and Gezemnado, the creator, great spirit. And so choice and consent is so foundational because it's through choice and consent that we even decide to come here as anishnabe people. And so we believe that our newborns, our babies come here having this direct connection to the spirit world. They have literally just walked down the path of souls. This direction, the same path that our elders who are passing away, hopefully at the end of a long, happy, happy, healthy life. And the other direction, they're passing each other like this, our babies are coming down and our elders are going back. And we believe that because they're so close to that space, they are uh, very holy. Very sacred, they're very important. It's a real responsibility for us to accept. A baby into our life, um, knowing that this is the most holy being that we could possibly be holding in our hands. Somebody who just literally dropped down from the sky world, uh, someone who passed. Our, our elders who are so venerated and so precious to us in that other direction, um, and, and. It, it, it couldn't be more clear in our culture that we have so many stories and, and understanding about why this time is so important. Um, we also believe that, that um, those babies are able to start taking in information. And as Anishnabe, we're always saying, we're always learning, we're always learning things. This journey for us is all about taking stuff in and learning. And there's a lot of lessons to be had in our whole entire life. And that starts at the minute of birth. And science says, yeah, there's seventy-plus innate newborn reflexes. That prove newborns, they're born with all of these abilities to see. They can see in a nearsighted capacity. They'd like to see things that are high contrast, light and dark colors. They can recognize sounds, they move towards sounds, they move towards smells. So they're not just little sacks of potatoes when they're born. They're born fully conscious, they're born fully sentient. And in our culture, we believe they start to take in information about what it means to be anishnabe right away. Meaning they will look around and I always ask, what's the first thing that a baby sees when they're born? What's the first information that they're taking in? What's the first lesson that they are taking in? When they open their eyes and they open their ears and they take that first breath of life on this side, do they look around to see chaos? Do they look around to see a lot of bright lights, lots of blinking, lots of loud noises? Uh, are they, are they noticing that the treatment of their birth giver, the vessel that um, birthed them? Uh, how is that person being treated? Are they being treated callously or between carelessly? They've been forgotten about? Are they being pushed and pulled on and poked at without their consent? Or as a baby being born into an environment that is so calm and peaceful and loving and caring. When they open their eyes, do they notice the birthing person being treated with a lot of reverence and sacredness and respect and love? What's the first lesson that they're taking in? Which world will you prefer your baby to be born in? That's the world that I'm working for. Obviously, I want birthing people to be treated with sacredness, to be treated with reverence, to be treated with respect. Being that they're the sacred passageway into this world, from the sky world into Anishnabe Aki. And so I take it very seriously, my responsibility to preserving and protecting this space for the newborn baby. And for the birthing person. And so we believe that we have a multitude of postpartum practices. Post meaning after and partum meaning the pregnancy. So literally just means after the birth. Um, postpartum has often been used as a shorthand or like an abbreviation for postpartum depression. But really, these are um, just the period of time after birth, which could. Be uh, conceived of as like particular moments in time. Um, starting with the first twenty-four hours and then extending into the first four to six weeks postpartum. Then there'd be like another phase which is um, after that and then all the way up into however many years of breastfeeding. Uh, that person may be doing, which for some families could be two to three years or even more. And so we have all of these many rituals and protocols and ways of conducting ourselves in the postpartum period. That we believe are really protecting the newborn and the life giver. We believe that they go hand in hand. The baby uh, lives and thrives and grows. Because of the health and wellbeing of the birth giver. And the healing of the birth giver and the coming back to the self after this epic immense ceremony. Is also extremely dependent on the newborn. So they are essentially as one in this time. And we're just talking about the first twenty-four hours to the first four to six weeks. Neurologically, they work together. Um, physiologically, they work together. The uh, everything that is healing within the baby is activated by the giving of milk in the carrying from the birth giver. And the healing and safety of the birth giver literally depends on uh, uh. Having this baby close to them. It is what helps to stop bleeding. It is what helps to prevent. Uh, postpartum depression and other mood disorders. It is what helps to shrink the uterus back down to its size that it's supposed to be appropriate uh, for postpartum. It is so protective that. It, 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 it's a very sacred and important role if we are to show up in this space. Because these two beings have together just undergone this, the most important ceremony, which is a ceremony of life. Uh, the ceremony of coming through via that passageway. Uh, when I was pregnant with my third baby. I had this dream that all of us were born. In a hole in the sky. And we have a lot of stories about like Bugginogijik, right? This, the hole in the sky. But I had this specific dream that we all came through based on our clan. So all of the Korean clan babies are born in one. Hole in the sky and all of the bald eagle clan babies are born in uh, the, the, the hole in the sky for the, the bald eagle babies and, and so on and so forth. And that was so special to me. But in order to do that, we have to go up there and get our babies and bring them back. And I have like. And I have like a much longer story about how I could actually see and witness that in my third birth so, so very clearly. Um but all of us have done that. We started out there, we came down here, our mothers brought us forth. And there's this real delicate and vulnerable space that we're in, where we're getting back our strength, we're coming back to our body. We're healing, our bleeding is to stop, we are to start making milk um in in abundance. We, you know, we're uh responsible now for this other life. And our healing and protection depends on this baby. And it is within all of our responsibility as people. Everyone, every single one here, even if you're not officially a birth worker, to be protective of this space. We're very, we're very quick um because of colonization and because of the loss of our language and and protocols to just forget that this period is actually very, very important. It's actually a life or death moment in time for both of these beings. And it it wha- what I really want is for us to return to an understanding of the sacredness of this time and the importance. If only because you want this baby to look around and see that, man, this place is really great. And Nishnabiaki is pretty awesome. Everyone here treats my mother with such respect and such care. Uh what a fantastic community to have been born in, man, so thankful to look around. And the first thing I see is somebody who just had their baby being served uh with homemade traditional foods from our land. Uh being treated with warmth and respect and care and love. And all of the kinship protocols that are inherent to our relationships as a Nishnabi. And there's a lot more that could be said about why this is such a vulnerable time. But this is just an introduction, so we'll keep on keeping on. But we have a lot of cultural practices. And again, um and as as Ojibwe people, like ye- there are a lot of other, you know, things that could be said about this time, so definitely don't just take what I say as like the one and only truth. There are many, many different ways of of uh sharing stories about this time period and many different protocols that may be uh present in your particular region, a community and family. And so just a little snippet, um but it for sure not limited to and not prescriptive at all. But we do observe traditionally a resting period after birth that is devoted to the healing of the body, the orientation of the newborn into this place and to the bonding, the the sacred bond between the birth giver and the newborn baby. In many cultures around the world, observe this particular period of time. And it's usually around thirty to forty days. For some people, it's a little bit longer. And for um someone who's had uh a vaginal delivery, that healing may be faster than someone who's had a cesarean. Cesarean's very major surgery um that that really needs extra time. So in some cultures, it's even longer uh of a resting and healing period if you've had a cesarean. But this is really, you know, it can look in a lot of different ways. But uh what what it could look like is somebody that has, you know, the ability to stay home, to stay inside as much as possible, to hold their baby uh unencumbered by any other uh complications, that they are able to latch their baby and feed their baby with minimal disruptions and minimal interruptions, that the community really wraps around them uh with a lot of care and a lot of love and that everything is provided to them so that their main jobs during this time are just to be with the baby and to orient this baby into this work. And there are a lot of other things that can be happening during this time. And including the giving of traditional foods to the birthing person. And these are cultural foods that are uh so abundant and so rich and so beautiful. Um and we had a great discussion about our traditional foods as well as uh traditional movement and fitness practices and a previous discussion that we had through the tribe. So encourage you to go back and reference that as a good starting point. Um but we live in an Nishnabiaki where we're surrounded by all these amazing foods and we're really lucky to have that ability uh to step outside our door and be able to harvest wild rice, be able to harvest our fish, be able to harvest our squashes and our uh corn and our um, you know, our nettles and other uh foods that are very appropriate for postpartum healing because they're very strengthening to the body. And they're also a reminder to the birthing person that their work here on earth is is still ongoing. Uh when you're in this space in between worlds, when you're literally hanging out in this space where the hole in the sky to the other side is like wide open, be very tempting to turn around and walk back into that place, right? Because that's the land of everlasting happiness, that's the place of perfection. That's like the ultimate goal is that we all end up back there, right? Um, life here is hard, life here like it sucks sometimes being an Nishnabi. Do you ever just ask like, god damn it, like uh life here is so hard. Uh why would I agree to this, right? And so it'd be very easy for somebody hanging in that space where the hole in the sky is wide open to walk back there. And so we have to be constantly reminding them that it's the care and the love and the respect provided to them that don't go, your life here, your life is still here. Um and 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 it is through the giving of these foods that we show that care and we show that love. It is also a reminder of their responsibilities, which is here on Mother Earth. And so how do we do that? We do that by giving them elements of Mother Earth abundantly, and that's through taking in our traditional foods. And so the particular things that are eaten during this time, but all of our cultural foods are very uh uh appropriate for the postpartum period. Um breastfeeding being something that's so important to our communities. Uh uh the vast majority of native women actually do want to breastfeed and initiate breastfeeding. So they start, most of our babies are fed human milk, which is really, really uh out outstanding when you think about how much our traditional practices have been disrupted and diminished um by the loss of our language, by the boarding school era, um through the Indian crime codes, through, you know, the, you know, the fact that we did not even have religious freedom on our own lands until nineteen seventy-eight. Uh the fact that breastfeeding has endured for so long is just a testament to our strength and resilience as a Nishnabi people. And so it's a tradition that is uh very longstanding and um definitely the norm for us as Ojibways. And certainly a lot of reasons why it's hard to be a breastfeeding parent. Uh a lot of knowledge that has to be returned and remembered within our communities. And a lot of reasons why our society is perhaps not as supportive of breastfeeding as it could be. So a lot of work left to do in that way. We have our naming ceremonies, so all of us come with our name and some come with more than one. Uh we can be named anytime in our life, doesn't have to be right when we're born. But when we're little babies, it's great to have a name. And there's different protocols to how you receive your name, who can get that for you. Um you might uh you might have a dream of your own name, it could be a relative that has a dream of your name. It could be that you actually go out and ask somebody in your community who's known to be a name giver. And you may give them tobacco and they will do the ceremony to retrieve that name for you. Uh but we all have our name and some have more than one. And that's a really important part of bringing back our traditional parenting practices. I have found this so, so foundational to my work as a mother because my kids' names tell me so much about them. Our names will often share a lot of information about who we are, our temperaments, our gifts and skills, and what our purpose is, how we are and how we move through the world. Um for instance, and 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 we have to know that in the language, just to know it in English isn't enough. Like, for instance, you hear my name, Water Woman, and you might think, you might conjure up some specific, you know, idea of what it means to like to move through the world as someone whose name is Water Woman. Um and there's a lot of different ways to say water in Nishnabi Moan, and one of them is Nebeesh. And it's a way, and sometimes when I say that, people think I'm saying tea. Because it's very descriptive, it's talking about like water that has something in it that has turned it a different color. So that's a very different way of seeing the world than just like water, right? There's just, there's infinite ways of talking about water in our language and very, very descriptive. Uh and so uh as I move through the world, you know, the things that I really enjoy and the medicines that I carry and like to be in relationship to are, no surprise, water with something in it that changes the colors. So I work a lot with teas and soups and broth because that's my thing, right? That's who I am. My kids are very different, they don't carry that same kind of perspective. They have different medicines that they're oriented towards, they have different types of personalities. And it's good for me as a mom to know their names in the language so I can better serve them and their goals. If I didn't know that, I would just be swinging, I wouldn't even know what I was doing. I'd be very disoriented. So it's good for us to get our kids' names because it shares a lot about them. And then there's not so many surprises for us. If you have a child whose name is like a thunder roaming over a mountain, that's a very different child than um, you know, somebody whose name is like a peaceful flower in the middle of a field. You know, it's gonna be two different kids that you're raising there, and I have those two different kids. So um it it's no surprise to me when my kids act the way they do because they act in their name, right? They act what their name says, their name told me already what kid was to come. And then they have their clan roles as well. So we're all born into our clan and we have our names. We have protocols around the placenta and the umbilical cord. And you can find out what these are, it's easy to find, you just ask around in your community. Um most Nishnabi will want to bring um their placenta to be buried back in the land. And the reason is because it is to root our children to the place that we live. It is to um it it it's one way of remembering that we're connected to Nishnabiaki literally because our our life is ongoing here, it's forever. When we put our placenta in the earth, our placenta is gonna disintegrate and turn back into the soil, which is then gonna be the land that we're stepping on, right? The land that our generations will continue to live on, hopefully forever. And that soil is also the place that our ancestors have been buried. That's literally us when we're walking out on the earth. And this is why as Ojibwe people, when we say uh we are the land and the land is us, that it's true. It's because we literally have put our placentas out there. And that soil, it comes from the nutrients that given um by that really sacred and important organ. And we have umbilical protocols as well, and these can vary from community to community. Some Nishnabi will um keep the umbilical stump, you know, and talking about the little piece of like the belly button that um dries up when you're born. And usually within the first few days up to a week or so postpartum, it'll fall off and then the belly button will close and it'll be like the belly button that we think of now. This is a short period of time where part of the um umbilical cord is there, it's just drying out. And some families will keep it. Uh some families will someday give it to the child so they will be responsible for carrying their own umbilical cord for the rest of their life. Some families may bury it in a very similar way to the placenta. There are a lot of other ways of um dealing with the umbilical cord. And none of this is to say like you'll be lost forever and you're not traditional enough if none of these things were done for you or you didn't do them for your children. Just to say that all of us are coming back to this in many different ways, all very valid. And none of this is like the one and only way to be a Nishnabi. But it's to come back to and honor the um instructions given to us within our stories and kinship roles. And so go out and ask around, what do you do with the umbilical cord in your family? What do you do with the placenta? And what do you do if yours was lost? What do you do if your placenta was lost um in in um maybe it was incinerated, maybe it was thrown away? Uh maybe your umbilical cord was lost. Um I did not know that when I had my baby and I didn't keep the umbilical cord, I just literally threw it in the garbage. Um I had a friend who didn't know what to do with hers, she kept it because she knew in her family they kept it. Uh but she was so tired of waiting for someone to tell her what to do, she threw it out. She threw it out a window. Um, right? So like, ask around, what do you do if you lost your placenta, right? There's ceremonies and protocols to how to get back to ourselves after we've we've had those losses. Community care and support are also so foundational. And even without all of the bells and whistles of our culture, this is the most important one. The most important thing is that we come together to care for this family and that we support them and take care of their needs so that they can just focus on healing themselves and bonding with their new baby. This is such a vulnerable and important time in our life. It's the most important ceremony, it's the ceremony of life, it's the ceremony of how we get to be here. And it's a lot of care, as you know, ceremonies are a lot of work and it requires a lot of hands and a lot of people doing things. And birth is no different. Uh so the most important thing is this community care and support. And it's perhaps one of the hardest ones because we've been so separated from our traditional ways of living. But many of us do have the ability, we have a lot of strengths and opportunities in our community because of who we are and where we live, uh to come back to this uh this kinship practice of caring for birthing people and caring for newborn babies.
Hey, Ryan, I've got a question here. Did you go back to your reservation to bury your placenta or did you bury it in the community that you live in? Or is this something that we would ask our elders?
Yeah, definitely ask your elder. I've heard a lot of different things about this, if you're not living in your tribal homelands, that it's your choice. So you could choose to take it back and sometimes people will freeze it in the meantime. Um or even to have it dehydrated and then um it can be preserved in that way. Um and take it back and it can be done at any point. So it's not like it has to be done on day four or whatever, it's just at some point you're gonna do the the burial. Um it could be that you choose to bury it where you are and because that's your home too, the land that we're on is always our home and we always have a responsibility to the land, even if it's not our traditional uh homeland or that's not where our family come from. Um I've had some really great discussions with people who've also been displaced from their communities who have wondered about, you know, what does it mean to bury our placenta in a place that's being fracked? Or land that's being disturbed by um, you know, pipelines and those types of things, the gas and oil industry. And that's just one, you know, one reason among many that we have to be very aware of of uh environmental justice and protection because that's literally where our placentas are gonna go. So we need to care a lot about the land that we're on. So I think that any place is good if it's done with intention and care. And it's legal, right? It's legal to do what you want with your own placenta, your own um child's placenta and umbilical cord. So it can go wherever you find it to to be best. I'm a big fan of also praying for yourself and using your own tobacco. So put your tobacco out and just ask your helpers, where should I put this? And you'll you'll get an answer. Um sometimes people will do it differently depending on what they want their child to be. So if you want your child to be um really good at navigating the water or be a really strong fisherman or somebody who works with nets um or who works with seaweed and other plants from the water, then you would put it close to the water. If you wanted them to be really good hunters and you would put it in the woods. If you wanted them to be um a really good cook and someone who works in the kitchen fire, you'd put it right next to your house. Um ye- there are a lot of, a lot of different teachings around where that can go and when it can be done. Um and doesn't have to be hurried, you know, you can set it aside, um preserve it in the in the way, the manner of your choosing. And then when you have an answer of where to put it, you can go ahead and do that. Any other questions? Okay. All right, and then um moth bags and cradle boards that we already talked about at the beginning. Um you know, we could spend a whole, you know, day just talking about these and why they're so important and all the the various different diverse teachings and ways of constructing. and all the, the various different, um, diverse teachings and ways of constructing them. There's multiple types of cradle boards. Did you know that? There's the tiki noggin and then there's the anka noggin. Uh, the tiki noggin is like the one that I showed you in the picture, which is like the hardwood. It's usually cedar or other types of wood that have the wrap, you know, just to tie the baby in. But we have an anka noggin as well. I mean to put a picture in here. It's actually a birch bark basket that looks very similar to what we would clean our wild rice in. It literally looks like a wild rice basket, but the baby goes in there and it's for the very newborn babies. We would typically save the tiki noggin for the babies that are a little bit bigger. The little bitty newborns go into the anka noggin and there's no tie on it. And so it tells me that our ancestors actually knew that this healing and resting period is so important that our babies are not really to be moved. Uh, we're not tying them in there with the intention of moving them around. We, we are just holding them in this little basket. And that's another type of cradle board that's made on birch bark. It's very, very light. You could literally just pick it up and like, whoo, very, very light compared to our, our wooden cradle boards. They're a little bit sturdier and much heavier. And of course, baby carrying or baby wearing, uh, something that indigenous people have been doing since the beginning of time, uh, a practice that is very much based in our values around keeping our babies close, keeping them safe, uh, and so much more, so much more. We talked for so long, we got fifteen minutes left. I want to try to stick to the one and a half hours and then save time for discussion, but, um, we could just go on and on and on. Uh, but I wanted to show some of the traditional foods and just like, I'm a big foodie. So everything for me is all about the food. And a lot of what I teach and a lot of what I do for families in my community is the preparation of these foods and the sharing of the recipes, the gathering of all these fantastic ingredients. So you see things that are traditional for postpartum, uh, the postpartum diet, which is bone broth, uh, made out of beef, bison, venison, chicken, turkey, or other, um, soups. And stews are real traditional in this time. Things are real liquidy and warm, soft and easy to digest with a lot of really great ingredients, um, herbs and spices. Uh, in the middle is the wild rice. There's actually an elk venison roast in there and some local Michigan cranberries. And then all the way onto the right is a, um, roasted squash soup. Um, and I'm one of those people, my husband and I laugh about this all the time. We're both like, did you grow up eating pumpkins? And I was like, no dude, I did not even know pumpkins were edible until I was an adult. And now I eat them so much. They're such an important food source. And I'm like, I can't believe, like, I just have like such heartburn when I walk around and like see all the pumpkins out on the porch, you know, for Halloween or whatever. But it's a really important traditional food, very edible. Um, great for healing wounds, great for smoothing out digestion, helps to fortify the body for making milk and abundance. Just so many reasons why we would want to eat pumpkin and, uh, many, many other different types of squashes. So, and this is like a blended one that's real liquidy and be kind of more of like a drink. So those are just a little sampling of some of our traditional foods. So let's get into the traditional birth work part of this and talk about what it actually looks like. And, and if you are, you know, if the spark in your mind is like, I want to be a birth worker, I want to be a doula, I want to be of service in this time period because you really believed what I have to say. You ready to step into this calling? Um, what does that look like? And so there's, you know, uh, many different ways of, of, of being a birth worker. And so I'm sharing from the perspective of somebody who does full spectrum work, which means I work with people in all stages of reproduction, from menstruation to preconception and fertility, to pregnancy, serving people regardless of their outcome, whether that's a birth, a pregnancy loss, or abortion, supporting folks through adoption and surrogacy as well as postpartum and newborn care. So full spectrum just means that we all have a spectrum of existence as people who are capable of reproducing and that we all deserve care, support, love, respect, um, and, and intentionality in those times. And so a full spectrum birth worker will usually sort of specialize in some of these areas, but these are just some of the possibilities for you. I believe that full spectrum birth workers also serve a spectrum of individuals, meaning that we actually see ourselves as being advocates for, um, creating a more just and equitable society for all of our relatives, especially those who are the most highly impacted by the inequities of our modern society, including those who are LGBT, Two-Spirit Plus, people who live in rural areas who face very different kind of healthcare access concerns than people who live in urban areas. And for sure, people who live in urban areas have very different experiences as well. People who are low income, people with disabilities, people with diverse body sizes. So not just thin, able-bodied people, people who are Black, Indigenous, and other persons of color or people of the global majority. Young people, because young people have reproductive experiences and they deserve support, care, and love and respect, uh, as well as there seem, there is this, uh, sort of historical significance within the full spectrum birth work world to orienting our care towards people who are seeking abortion specifically, that you need someone there with you, uh, to help you before, during, and after all of these experiences, that they're all very valid, that we do not forget our relatives who need our help the most. And I, I really believe that full spectrum birth work is very intentional um, about turning towards those people and wrapping them with care. And so I always like to just remind us and, and bring us back to this understanding that, oh, birth and postpartum are just one of our many ceremonies that we have. And all of us may be, um, aware of, you know, we look out in our communities and see that there's this really amazing work going on, that there's a lot of revitalization of our culture, of our language, of our ceremonies. And I'm always like, hey, don't forget about birth and postpartum because it's just one of our, our, of our, of our hills of life, right? We have our four hills of life. And, um, we have particular protocols and, and ways of conducting ourselves during each of those experiences. And, um, you know, some of you may be interested in preserving those and bringing them back in, in a really intentional way in your family and your community. And so just a handful of the ceremonies, of course, there's a lot more, but I just wanted to, to showcase how birth and postpartum, traditional parenting are included. And I have a focus in postpartum specifically. I work with people in all realms of reproduction, but I have a special passion for working with people after birth, if you haven't guessed already. Um, and so I do a lot of work in training postpartum doulas and mentoring postpartum doulas. And, um, that's like my thing. I don't just talk about it. I'm literally out in the community working as a postpartum doula, uh, 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 all the time and have been for a very long time. Um, I got my start in birth work, uh, doing work that I didn't even know had a name. I was just showing up for people. I was doing support groups. I was cooking food. Uh, my initiation into postpartum care actually came when I was working as a birth doula and I had attended and supported a birth, uh, with a Chinese family. And, um, at the time I was a student at Michigan Tech, so it was a family, you know, students who were there. Uh, and she had her baby and like, it was a really hard birth. I'll be honest with you. It was somewhat traumatic for me as like the doula to witness, um, what happened in birth. But after it was over, I was like, I just need to get the hell out of here and like get some air and like, take a deep breath and come back to myself so that I can go back in and help this family postpartum. So I just go out to take a break and I noticed that in the room, like the waiting room was a hospital birth and in the waiting room, um, there was all these people and they all had like little boxes of food and it just smelled so good. It was just like so many scents in the room. And there's probably like eight people who had come and they were all waiting with their little boxes. And I asked the dad, he also came out, um, to greet them. And I was like, what is all these people doing here? And he was like, oh, you know, they had all brought the traditional postpartum dishes for the family. And I was like, holy crap, I can't even like fathom what, like, eight people brought them freshly cooked hot food from their culture and there are very specific things that they eat within that period of time. And they all just came here and brought it. They didn't come to see the baby. They weren't coming to interrupt this experience. Many of them not even go in the room. They just literally showed up to, to support this family and to bring all this food. And so that was my orientation of postpartum care, that there's like specific ways that we serve people in this time and been doing that ever since. So, uh, postpartum is really my passion. I find it to be such an underserved area of birth work, but there's a lot of things that we do with our clients, our families that we serve. Uh, we provide resources prenatally. So during the pregnancy, through our traditional storytelling, through reading that we may gather, through knowledge that we have about what to expect for postpartum, um, talking about what they may be able to prepare ahead of time, including the meals. They can actually start cooking and doing some of the food prep before the baby comes. That way it's easier to access when the baby's here. Uh, as well as any cultural support that we can provide, you know, answering questions, getting connected with knowledge keepers and elders in the community, uh, offering classes and those types of things. We protect the immediate postpartum space. So I take this role very seriously when someone has had their baby, that I see it as part of my job is to ensure that they can remain together as much as possible with minimal disruptions and minimal harm. And I, I see myself as a protector of the space because I understand the openness and the, uh, vulnerability of those two beings. And I, I take it very seriously that they stay here. We off, we offer hands-on material, so just like literally being a helping hand in the house, as well as cultural and emotional support. And then we do offer meal preparation and medicinal support such as preparing herbal teas, preparing broths, uh, just cooking all those really beautiful foods that I showed you in the picture. That's a big part of what I do for families.
So Rayanne, oh, being as you're all the way in Michigan, uh, what are some things that people could do potentially, um, to ask maybe questions? Or like, what are things that you could do from far away that would help people? Does that make sense? Like what things?
You mean if they wanted to start doing this or?
Yeah, if they were like interested, they're like, oh my gosh, I learned so much from this event. I have, uh, some follow-up questions or I'm interested in a little bit more detail on maybe the medicines she's talking about or some of the meal prep she's talking about. Um, could they connect to you or how would that work?
Yes, yes. That's a perfect way of transitioning into how to do this. And to become a birth worker or a doula, doula is just a different word for a birth worker. It has a particular historical context. It's not super important here, but I use the terms pretty interchangeably. One, I want everyone to remember that you are already born with knowledge inside of you. All of us literally were born with the knowledge of how to be born. We came here already with immense wisdom. Some of us, we just gotten lost along the way or we've forgotten, we've become hard-headed. But we, within us, we already carry knowledge, right? So I, I want everyone to know you already an expert in something. You already have gifts and something. You already have a purpose in some way. Uh, we don't necessarily need anyone outside of ourselves to tell us that. We just need to get connected back to self. So really root yourself in, in your own knowledge and your own experience. Your roles in the community already matter. You already qualified just based in the fact that you have a desire to serve and that we exist as Anishinaabe people within very sophisticated kinship roles and practices. And that your work as an auntie, your work as a mom, your work as a sister, your work as a, um, a relative, it, it already qualifies you to be a birth worker because all it takes is the humility and the desire. Uh, and your experiences matter. You can add on to that with some, um, additional training, including formal, formal doula trainings and workshops. And there's many, many to choose from. Uh, there's, there, uh, there are even some that are specific to indigenous people. You could take classes with, um, you know, training organizations. There's books that you could read. Uh, you could, you, I, I get educated in a lot of different ways. A lot of people will self-study and continue to learn forever and ever. So, you know, doulas are always taking classes to learn new skills, to learn from different people, to hear different perspectives on teachings. Um, for sure, getting grounded in the folks in your community who remember those stories and, um, you know, synthesizing, uh, your own experiences with what you learn. Uh, so you could go out and take a formal training if you wanted to, and, and there's many different ones that you could choose from. Um, but you also don't have to do that and you don't have to be certified. It's a personal choice. It's not a requirement. Many people do choose to be certified through an organization. So you would go and take your training. There may be a fee or a quiz, uh, to pass to be like officially certified. Um, that shows you, you did the training. It shows you have a foundational set of skills. Um, it may give you more credibility. But for indigenous people, that's not always something we need to have because we have such strong systems in place for caring for our, ourselves and each other already. Um, so certification just sort of the icing on the cake for us. And then I also encourage you to seek mentorship with experienced people who do this work. Uh, and always orienting yourself back to your own knowledge and your own wisdom because we are all babies first, right? We are, we are, we all are babies first. We all came, um, as holy sacred beings. We all came through those hole, you know, that hole in the sky for our clan. We walked that pathway, um, with our mothers and, um, we can, it would, it, it's in our DNA to do this work. So, uh, there's a lot of different options there. And I do put my, um, contact information. So I do offer, uh, mentorship and classes for people who are in this pathway. And I'm also connected to a lot of really fantastic people who have a lot more knowledge and information in this way of living than I do. So, uh, please take note of this and I'm going to give the slides to everybody so you can, um, have these for your future reference. And then we may have some things and work with Boys for it too, uh, to bring some of the training out to, uh, people in the community. So lots and lots of different options. And now that we're in more of a virtual space, there's plenty of ways to learn online, um, and just get out, taste the things, do, you know, like, uh, cook the things for yourself, uh, heal your own postpartum and then you can go out and, and start working with other people. So that's what I wanted to offer, uh, to you tonight and just extend a lot of gratitude to each of you for listening to me and, and for the honor of, um, taking up space, uh, in your, your living room or your office for this one and a half hours tonight. I'll, um, pass it back to Peyton and to the group to see, uh, what feedback and questions you all have.
Thank you, Rayanne, um, for that. I felt like I learned a lot. I also felt like it was, it made me realize all the things I don't know. Do you know what I'm saying? Like you're just like going into all the different like aspects of how it works and like these different things that you could talk about. And so I felt like that was really good, just because like you, like almost every single topic that you brought up, you were just like, I could talk all day on just this one topic. So like for the same time, like let's go on to the next topic and everything.
I know. Yeah, I feel like the more I know, the more I know I don't know.
Right.
I'm like, I don't know anything. I gotta keep learning and keep learning and keep learning. So this kind of coming together is really important.
Do people have any comments, concerns, questions?
I do have a, um, wishful thinking, if you can connect with me. So I work with the Minnesota Indian Women's Sexual Assault Coalition. And so I think these kind of fit together a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. Definitely let's be connected.
And I can share her, um, contact information with you too.
Okay, fantastic.
Anybody else, any comments? People saying thank you, learning so much? Awesome. Well, if you guys are interested in talking to Rayanne more, um, she did leave her information, like she said. Well, if you guys are interested in talking to Rayanne more, she did leave her information. Like she said, she will share the slides with me. So I'll post all of that information on the Voice Work Cultural Healing Facebook page. And then this recording will go on the Voice Work Culture Healing YouTube page. And so those, that way you guys can refer back to this, share with other people who are interested in this. If you guys have questions or I know Rayanne talked a lot about asking local people, local elders or people in your guys' communities from like about some of these questions. So if you feel like you need or want to be connected with some of those things as well, you can reach out to me and I can try to offer the knowledge that I have. Otherwise, yeah, let's just continue talking, continue learning, share the information you came here with and with other people around you too. So. Good. And everyone have a wonderful night.